Paul, the meeting to order. It is February fourteenth, 2018. This is the regular Board of Education meeting for the school district of Waukesha. You probably have heard by now of the tragedy that happened in Parkland, Florida, and in Broward County this afternoon. And what a terrible situation. I'd like to take just a moment of silence to keep that community in mind at this time. And I hope that you'll continue to keep that community in our thoughts and our prayers. And at this time, I would like us all to be united by standing and saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue, will you please take the roll call?
William Baumgart.
Here.
Barbara Brusink. Greg Dietz.
Here.
Amanda Roddy.
Here.
Patricia Madden.
Here.
Patrick McCaffery. Kurt O'Brien.
Here.
Karen Reinacek.
Here.
Joseph Como.
Here. Both Patrick and Barb are excused this evening. Barb still has that nasty illness that both Patricia and Bill had. These guys are back in action, but she's still under the weather there. And you'll notice also Todd Gray is not sitting at my right-hand side, but the deputy superintendent is, Mr. Cook, Dr. Cook. And Todd is representing the great state of Wisconsin. And Wazda, he's the past president of Wazda. And at the National, was it, what's the meeting, Sue? I'm sorry.
National Education Convention.
Thank you, National Education Convention. So Todd won't be with us tonight either. Will you please verify, Sue, that the meeting's been properly posted?
Yes, it has.
Thank you. We usually have bright lights at this time, but we are not celebrating that tonight, nor do we have any recognitions this evening. But we do have our student report from Waukesha West High School. Will Emily and Jordan please come forward and fill us in on what's happening at West? Technical difficulties?
I think we got it.
Just got it answered.
Okay.
All right.
You guys should be able to figure this out, anyone here in the audience.
Oh, hey, guys. I'm Jordan. I'm a senior this year at Waukesha West. And some of the things I'm involved with is our Wolverine Leadership Academy, which is actually newly founded, and we're going to cover that. And then a couple of service clubs, like Interact and Key Club. And then some more academic clubs, like FBLA and Forensics.
I'm Emily. I'm also a senior at West. I'm involved in Student Council, tennis, the Wolverine Leadership Academy, FBLA, and Key Club. So the first big event we had recently was our Student Council Food Drive. And I'm president of Student Council, and this is something I'm really proud of. Every year, we have a huge school food drive. That's the largest in Waukesha County, and it's the largest food drive that our food pantry locally gets every year. This year, we had our biggest food drive in school history with 3,170 items.
Another thing that West kids have been up to is FBLA. Our FBLA chapter just had their regional competition a couple of weeks ago, and nine members will have qualified to state and will be attending. In addition to that, we also had a service project through the year with the Christmas Clearing Council, where we raised money through bake sales and then went out and bought toys, Christmas presents for kids who couldn't afford that. And then at the various conferences that we have throughout the year, there are different workshops where FBLA members at our school listen to some key speakers about things like leadership and communication and other business-related topics.
Recently, we had nineteen of our seniors sign to play athletics at the next level, and we had some kids sign at Oshkosh, La Crosse, Whitewater, Iowa State, University of Minnesota, Twin Cities, Brown University, Turine, Benedictine, University of Dubuque, Winona State, the Navy Academy, and Concordia.
And then going back to the idea of the Christmas Clearing Council, another group at West that raised money for that was Ignition, which is sort of our school's mentoring program, where we welcome the freshmen, and we really connect with them before the year starts. And then during the course of this year, we wanted to help out with the Christmas clearing shopping, which is, once again, buying Christmas-related items for the families that can't afford it. So we had a competition during our advisory hours to see which class could raise the most money. And we ended up raising about three and a half thousand dollars in all, which was then used to purchase Christmas gifts for about forty children or sixteen families. And then West students then wrap these all up and then deliver them out to the families before Christmas.
So a new club, like Jordan said, is the Wolverine Leadership Academy. It's for juniors and seniors. And so we're divided into four subcommittees. So I'm on the special events subcommittee, and Jordan is on the community service. And so each of our subcommittees are in charge of creating a little activity or incentive or a new event at West that will bring the school together or impact the community. So for special events, we're starting a trivia night at West, and then...
And then for service, we were in contact with Bethesda Elementary School. And students from West will be heading over there in June to host like sort of an activity day so the elementary schoolers can connect with the high schoolers. And then building off of that, Waukesha West Drama has their presentation of Shrek the Musical coming up on March sixteenth through eighteenth, and then again on the weekend of the twenty-third. And more information about that is available on our website that's dedicated to West Drama, being westdrama.com. And this musical is really neat because it's a lot like the movie. So we're hoping to get a lot of families in the area and things along those lines coming in. And then some of our band members have been working very hard because live music from the band classes is going to be available as well.
So a cool thing that we got involved with recently is there's two honors bands. I got to be part of both of them, which was a really neat experience. The first one was a WSMA State Honors Project. And you have to audition to be in that. We had Luke Murshorf in choir, Emma Kate Telke in orchestra, Anna Kretlow in orchestra, and then myself in band. And it's a camp that you go for a week and stay at University of Green Bay. And you get one week to learn the music. And then you go back for the state music convention, and you perform there. And it's only two days, so that was a really neat experience and lots of hours of rehearsal. And then seven West students went up to Eau Claire for the NBA All-State Band. And we had two-day, it was a two-day camp to learn all the music. Our conductor was actually the composer of some of our music, and it was twelve hours of rehearsal.
And then next, we just have a little segment about the Waukesha West Forensics Team because forensics is something that hasn't been too huge at our school in the past. But actually, this year was the first year our team broke twenty-five members. And that's not a huge amount, but for us, that was a pretty big deal. And just last weekend, we actually took third place as a large team at a Pius Invitational, which, once again, was a first for us as a team. And then looking forward, we have sub-districts, which is essentially at the regional competition level on March second, which is coming up soon. And then if all goes well with that, we'll have districts following that shortly after. And then we're hoping to also end up going to state at UW-Madison during late April.
So coming up for Student Council, we're trying a new dance this March. It's called the Galactic Get Down. It's March tenth from seven-thirty to ten-thirty in the Waukesha West Fieldhouse. It's a costume or casual dance, so we're asking students to come dress up like themes from space. The school actually voted on the theme, so we're hoping that we get a good turnout. And it's, we're going to have some fun spirit days throughout the week, like Mathletes versus Athletes, Flannel Friday. So the students are kind of excited for that one.
Another thing that West students ran was the annual Interact Rummage Sale. And that's an event where all the students at the school, all the teachers at the school are very, very strongly encouraged to bring in items like clothing, furniture, just things they aren't using, and then donate it to Interact. And then in turn, Interact sets up a huge rummage sale where we book out the entire cafeteria, and we set up tables, and people come in in the community and buy those items. And this year, we raised eighteen hundred dollars, which went towards Viper. And our overall theme for the club was veterans this year. That was our focus for our impact. And Viper is an organization visually impaired patriots experiencing the road, where they take veterans who've been disabled in service, and they put them on, they pair them up with guys on Harleys, and they get to go out and experience the road. And afterwards, they have just sort of like a celebration in their honor and the things that they've done, and our money was used to help with that.
So new to West is the Avid Program. It's a rigorous college preparation program. It begins next year, and its focus is on our current freshmen. So this Monday, fifty-six freshmen attended an informational lunch, and then their parents also had a meeting to get involved for next school year.
All right. And then to wrap things up, we just thought we'd have some general recognition for different athletic success at our school. So a lot of these are the more recent ones. We have our West Palms team qualifying for state. We have the various wrestlers qualifying for sectionals. We had Eric Hansen, Andrew Buthay, and Max Peters, who are all going to state for boys swim and dive. West snowboarding as a team qualified for state. And then the Cheer, JV, and Varsity both took first and second at a local tournament. And that just about wraps up everything we had planned in particular. So now, if you guys have any questions or things along those lines.
Mr. Baumgart.
Yes. I noticed in the pictures you showed us that you guys show up a lot. You also go to school there? But you know, it reminded me of a saying, and you've probably heard this. If you want something done, give it to a busy person. So I compliment you on your involvement in so many things, and that's good. I was particularly interested in when you mentioned forensics. Building it up, that's important. I happened to participate many years ago, actually when I was a student at Pius High School, where you just were there. And it's very, it helps you form your abilities better in speaking and communicating with other people and defending points that which you have to do at some point in time. Which actually leads me to my next question, first question, I guess. What are your plans for the next year?
I'm going in between Drake University in Indianapolis, or no, Drake and Des Moines, and Butler in Indianapolis. And I want to double major in Actuarial Science and Secondary Education for math.
Jordan?
And then for me, right now, I'm thinking of Chemical Engineering. I may be going to Georgia Tech, but I've still to hear back from a couple of more colleges.
Okay. Well, sounds like good stuff. You'll do well, both of you. Thank you for your visit.
Other questions? I have a real quick one for Emily. With WSMA, you went up to Green Bay, and you got to meet some students from various schools throughout the state, some really top talent. Could you maybe go into that a little bit? What did you take from that? What were the challenges, those kinds of things?
Yeah, it was definitely a really cool camp because usually we have a long time to learn the music, but we only had a week. And so, and our director was a nationally-known composer, and he wrote most of our music. So being surrounded by kids that are the best talent in the state and only having a week to learn it, that was a lot of pressure to play really well. So I learned a lot about myself as a musician, and I learned a lot of tips from people around me. And so it made me a lot better at playing my instrument. And I learned a lot of stuff about music, especially from the composer, about how to play music, especially the ones that he wrote because he had so many little insights and feelings about the music that you usually don't get if you're just playing it and never meet the composer of the music.
Yeah, that must have been pretty neat to interact with him and really understand what was behind the piece.
Yeah.
Excellent. Yeah, thank you. Mr. O'Brien?
So I'm going to ask a question I guess I've never asked before of each of you. How long, it's going to be a two-part question. I mean, how long have you been in the district in our educational system?
I've been here since kindergarten. I went to higher and elementary school, and then I went to Hornington Middle School, and then now I'm at West.
Yeah, I've also been here since kindergarten. I've jumped around a bit. I think in kindergarten, I went to Meadowbrook. Then I switched to Summit View. Fifth grade, I went to Randall Stom Academy, the first year in open. And then I went to Butler Middle School, and then now I'm at Waukesha.
So now here's the second part of my question. Can you give me an indication, pick one of the educational staff that had the most influence on your life so far? Without naming the name, just give me, you can give me a name if you want to, but give me... Can you pick one out of those twelve?
Principal Ryan's in the back there, too. No pressure.
Be a principal.
I'd say personally that the staff members that have had the most impact on my life would be a lot of the club advisors. Because when you're running all these clubs, especially when you're younger, too, and you're just getting experience with it, that isn't something you have a lot of experience or background in. And a lot of these advisors who have been doing this for years and years, especially our FBLA advisor, they help you show you the ropes, help show you how to communicate effectively and really help build your confidence. So I'd say as far as staff members impacting me personally, a lot of them would be through Actuarial Science.
I would say our FBLA advisor, too. She ended up being our tennis coach for my senior year, and that made my senior year. I was so excited when she told us she was going to be our tennis coach. And I'd also say the math department, because for a long time, I thought I wanted to be a dentist. And so, you know, and I really liked math, and that was something I was kind of upset about leaving behind. So some of the math teachers, Mr. Cumberland, he was my calculus teacher, sat me down and was talking about careers in math because he knew I was a little bit on the fence about going into dentistry. And he's the reason why I found Actuarial Science, and that's what I majored in in college.
Okay. Well, I think that's, I've never asked that question before, but those are great answers. So thank you.
Anybody else have a question? Yes, Amanda?
I do, yes. You'll have to pardon me. I'm a mother of a kindergarten and a fourth grader. What is FBLA?
It's Future Business Leaders of America.
Okay.
Yeah.
We know those letters, but they're usually in an order. And it's always above my head. I was like, what is that? But secondly, I want to thank you on behalf of many different families. I am a daughter of two veterans. And when people recognize my parents for different things, they don't always feel that they deserve it. But the family members and their support system greatly appreciate it. So thank you for what you did with the Viper Group.
All right. Thank you, Emily and Jordan, for your report. I think we'll have at least one more from you still this year, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We're now at the section of our meeting where we listen to our community citizens speak to us. As has been past practice, each individual will be limited to three minutes of time to speak. And at the two-and-a-half-minute mark, Pat Madden will give you a signal and give you about thirty seconds to wrap things up. We expect all speakers to honor our time limit, to refrain from using any inappropriate language in any manner and be respectful in their comments. Speakers who do not meet these expectations may be prohibited speaking at future Board of Education meetings. We also expect that the audience will be respectful of the speaker in the Board of Education and refrain from responding with verbal comments, cheering, applause, or other behavior that would detract from the meeting. Also, in order to respect our speakers, meeting participants, please silence your phones at this time. We do have one person signed up, Representative Scott Allen. Scott, welcome.
Thank you. First of all, what amazing poise and confidence those two had, huh? Wow, that was remarkable. I wish they were here because I just, I wanted to just give them a proper due respect because that's fantastic. Secondly, most of you got blue books. I've got some other blue books here and in the box. I'm going to leave the box there. Anybody who wants a blue book, come grab one. They're the state sort of almanac, if you will. So I wanted to bring those and share those with you. And I bring greetings from Madison. We've done, I think, some good things this year relative to education in Wisconsin. There's always more to do, as we all know, but I think we're moving in the right direction. And I know that I get input regularly from your superintendent, who, by the way, I think is easily one of the best superintendents in the state. I think Waukesha schools have been masterfully steered by him and you for the last several years, and you are to be commended, and he is to be commended. I wanted to touch briefly on the subject that I have had some personal experience with. And that is, and I encourage you to Google it tonight when you go home, that is teen sleep phase delay. And in particular, Google the screen impacts of sleep phase delay, on sleep phase delay. Teen sleep phase delay is a natural phenomenon, and it is exacerbated by screens. Now, you saw these two young people come up here and in a matter of moments use their fancy iPads to pull up a presentation on your screens right here. Now, if that were me, it would have taken me a good half an hour to try to figure that one out, and I might not have even been successful at that. But they're masters at it, in part because we put those screens in their hands, and we teach them that, and that's the world that they live in and they're going to live in. So we're not going to get away from screens. But it has an adverse impact on the natural consequence of teenagerhood, which is sleep phase delay. I'm going to encourage you to talk to Superintendent Gray and his other administrative staff because I think they've got some ideas for how Waukesha schools can be on the forefront of addressing sleep phase delay and its natural consequences. The natural consequence, of course, is sleep phase delay is sleep deprivation. And with sleep deprivation comes all sorts of adverse consequences among young people. We would like to avoid that, I'm sure. I'm happy to consult and work with the superintendent and you guys, as need be, to the extent that there may be state regulations or state laws that might be getting in the way or may help or hinder in that process. Please let me know. But it's an honor to be here tonight. Thank you for the work that you do. I'm happy to entertain any questions.
We really don't have a dialogue, yeah.
All right, no problem. But I'm happy to be here. You can call me anytime.
Thank you for the blue book, and thank you for being here tonight. And we will be in touch with you on this topic.
Super, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other people in the audience that would like to address the board at this time? Okay, thank you. Moving on to our minute approval, we do have several minutes for consideration. January tenth, 2018, regular board minutes. January seventeenth, executive session expulsion. We also had another one on January twenty-fourth for an expulsion panel. Is there a motion?
A move for approval.
For approval? Moved by Bill. Is there a second? Signed by Mrs. Reinacek. Any discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes seven zero, Sue. And moving on to our communications portion of the meeting. Dr. Cook, did we receive any?
We did. We received two letters of commendation from Adam Jacoby from the Wisconsin High School Forensics Association. The first addresses Waukesha West High School, Nathan Barish, and the cast of the play Wait Until Dark for their outstanding achievement at the 2017 State Theater Festival. They were held, I'm sorry, they received awards for Critics' Choice, a directing award, an ensemble acting award, a crew award, an outstanding acting award, went to Evan McGuinness as Roat, and Reagan Carter as Susan. A second letter from Adam Jacoby acknowledges the achievements of Waukesha South High School, Aaron Richards, who was the advisor, Kit Donahue, who's the director, and the cast of the play The Crucible. They received awards for the Critics' Choice Award, a directing award, an ensemble acting award, a crew award. Outstanding acting went to Jordan Levine as Elizabeth Proctor and Trey Prater as John Proctor. So I'm very happy that this acknowledgement came in.
Yeah, thank you very much. We typically have a Waukesha Education Foundation report at this time, too, but there is not one this evening. So we'll move on to our Safety Committee report given by Amanda Roddy.
Yes, sir, thank you. The Safety Committee met this morning, and their agenda was, started off with the workers and the student incident reports that were reviewed. Next, there is some updated information with regards to safe schools. Lori Dudley had discussed, had discussions with Student Services and the HR regarding the safe school training and looking to determine what is currently offered to employees. The district has a list of all the different trainings that are offered to the employees, new and current, listed on the website. And they're working together to see where different trainings are offered under safe school so that it's all coming out of one streamline, at the same time, still following what DPI requires from the district. The other, the next update was with regards to the safety monitoring systems. Heartland is almost done installing all of the security monitors throughout the district. There will be secure entrances, camera systems set up on every school and district building. That includes Lindholm and the Service Building.
Yeah, I had trouble getting into Lindholm on Monday.
They're screening you.
Be a messenger.
I guess.
A side note regarding the security, there was some other discussion regarding employee badge access during lockdowns. And there was some discussion on that. You'll see more in the minutes. New business that was discussed, the Waukesha County had a grant for lead testing in elementary schools. This was done in eight of our schools over one of the last breaks that we had. The remaining schools will all be tested. Through this, it's recommended that elementary schools are tested, but the district will be doing all of the school buildings. And then following up to that, they will, the district will also be moving forward doing radon testing letters. And I have samples of those letters here with me. They will be sent to parents notifying them of these tests that are being done. And the next point is that the meeting, the committee will be meeting again on Wednesday, March fourteenth, at nine a.m. at the Service Building. Let me conclude my report.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Roddy. Moving on to our Charter, School, and Program Report given by Mr. Baumgart.
Thank you. I do have several items this evening. First one you might be aware of already, but I would like to remind people about the WTMJ Channel Four video celebrating the students from South and our Weba program and working in businesses. So if you haven't had a chance to see that, look it up. And I'm going, this packet, this will be in your packet on Friday, so it's a long link for you to get to it. So it's really worth seeing and very positive about us. And I have, regarding the STEM program, I've got some comments here. I'm going to primary focus on this segment to emphasize that it's more going on at STEM schools than just STEM. Some examples I'd like to share of both the STEM and the things that you might consider non-STEM or part of the A in STEAM. First one is a math point. There was, there's a thing called Math Counts Competition. We had four students place high enough in this, high enough to head to the state level, and one student took fourth out of two hundred students. So we're doing some good math stuff. We're also shortly going to be getting into the National Fluid Power Association Challenge, which has been an annual thing and very positive with the kids. Moving a little bit away from the science-type stuff, they will be holding their annual STEM outdoor furniture extravaganza in the spring. The kids make out of wood, make furniture that's available to you for outside. Sports, intramural volleyball is kicking off next week. Track and field will be launching in March. An electronics club will be, is at maximum, excuse me, at maximum capacity, twenty-four students. Music, third-best sales in their history. And I don't think, I don't know if they've done it more than three times or not, so I can't comment on that. But they had a musical with the kids over at the Saratoga campus. Great feedback, selecting musical for upcoming school year already. And the choreographer and musical director will be returning for next year as well. So it's an arts program. Moving on to another school Summit View, this was kind of an interesting shock to me, if I want to call it that. Principal Jeff Peterson attended the Magnet Schools of America Legislative and Policy Conference last week. One day of the conference was spent on, and I didn't understand this sentence, so I asked him to please get me some information so I can share it with you with some intelligence, spent unpacking the federal impact on Individual States, Every Student Succeeds Act. So he's got more behind there someplace. I'm not sure what it is. Also, he spent Thursday at Capitol Hill in DC with Speaker of the House Paul Ryan, senior legislative aide, his, excuse me, not with him, with his aide, providing information on Magnet Schools and, most importantly, on what goes on in the Waukesha School District. So thank you, Jeff, for being involved in stuff like that, and I hope we can see where that's going to take us. Also, he is announcing that Mrs. Kathy Brooks is a National Board Certified Teacher just since the holidays. since the holidays. She has achieved one of the highest professional accreditations a teacher can receive and has been with Summit View for 25 years. And I think that's just about all of them. I also have one more, which is ad libbed because I didn't, it came on this afternoon and you don't have it on your copy, Joe, but it was worth mentioning. I was over at Hawthorne this afternoon and they are doing their science engineering day over there with the kids. And there's some really importantly positive things to get out of that, not just the kids and the teachers, but the flight academy sent their students over to be the guides in each classroom and what the project they were doing on. So, this is really managed by seventh, mostly seventh grade graders. And I've talked to some of them and they were just so excited. First of all, they're very, a little apprehensive about working with, you know, first and second graders and stuff. But as the day went on, they loved it. And then I had a chance to talk to one of the Carroll College students that's there in our new lab program. And based on her comments, I would say that program is off to a very positive start. She's just loving what she's doing over there. She's already kind of like a student in residence, working with the kids on math, I forgot, I think she said math, and is planning to be there next year as a student, what do we call them nowadays? Student teachers? So, like I said, that just came up and I wanted to add that on because I thought there were some really positive things going on there.
Yeah.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Bill. Moving on to our consent agenda. Darren, did we have any public gifts this month?
Yeah, four gifts tonight, or five, I guess. Les Paul Middle School received $4,000 from Northwestern Mutual, matching gifts, matching gifts from Paul and Kathleen Oman. This money is used to purchase technology for the building to inspire students. North High School had two gifts, a 2001 Dodge Intrepid estimated value of somewhere at $50 from Debbie and Brett Estes, and a 1995 Camry estimated at $500 from Lori and Scott Oakley. Both vehicles will be used in the auto classes for student learning. Waukesha West High School received $10,000 from the Marjory Cyber Eiler Foundation. This money will be used to cut the cost of the Peru trip for students. And the last gift, the teaching and learning department received $500 from Voya Financial to help pay food costs for the 2018 Waukesha One Conference.
Oh, nice. Once again, thank you for those gifts. Very generous. Your agenda includes various categories for approval. If any board member wishes to set an item aside for separate consideration, you will have that opportunity in a short time. Also included in the items for approval are decisions of the expulsion panel, which met on January 17th, 2018, and January 24th in 2018. A confidential communication regarding the details of the expulsion was in your Friday packet, along with the minutes under item number one G. So, at this time, if any board member has anything that you'd like to set aside, please so indicate at this time, including discussion on the expulsion because we do have a closed session scheduled if anyone would like to separate that out. Okay, seen none. Patricia Madden, would you please present the consent agenda?
Thank you, Mr. President. Earlier this evening, the Human Resources and Compensation Committee approved of two resignations, 15 retirements, one leave of absence, two new teacher contracts, six executive and minister contracts, and 40 middle management contracts. The information was provided in your packet and an addendum was placed on your desks. Mr. President, I move that the consent agenda be approved as amended.
Is there a second to that? Second by Mr. Dietz. Any discussion? Sue, please take the roll call.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes seven zero.
Concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Pat. Moving on to the superintendent's report. As you know, Mr. Gray is not here this evening. As I had mentioned, he was at the National Education Conference tonight. But Terry Schuster has a wonderful presentation tonight that highlights the various opportunities in our school district. Welcome, Terry.
I'm just going to introduce a new video that we just finished about our district and it is designed to be an upbeat snapshot of who we are. District this size, it's hard to cover every school. So, the message here is there's something for every learner and it's called We Are Waukesha.
My goal is that every student can do whatever they want in life, whenever they want in We educate right around 13,000 students, seventh largest district in the state.
And now move some of your orange blocks over.
We're all about choice here. We want to make sure that parents can find a good fit for their students when they're in this district.
Need to add some animations to our characters. Last spring, I wrote and was awarded a WEF grant for, it was called Bridging the Physical and Digital World Using Black Souls. And then, this week, we just started our coding and gaming club. Students all the way from kindergarten to fifth grade come in and they're starting to create video games with the Black Souls kits.
Why did Stray One grow but not Stray Two?
The mission of the Health Academy is to prepare our students for the, to become healthcare professionals by learning the skills of collaboration and problem solving and becoming self-driven learners.
Why, why did we expect growth on both sides?
It just gives you so much knowledge about the health field and it allows you to see certain careers you might be interested in and it's just great.
So, I think we're, we're ready to go.
I started welding here and I fell in love with it and took it beyond welding at high school. And I applied for the Duell Roman Academy, got in, and I've been welding every single day and I absolutely love it.
You know, all the art teachers, they really just want to make a connection with all the students. They really want to bring out the best in you and like all the creativity that they know that you have. They just want to make sure that you're able to express yourself to the best of your abilities.
I think every career you need to think creatively and outside the box and this is the place where we teach them how to do that.
Instead of putting students in a set program, we have developed programs around the students. We are a total open district. You can go to any school you want, as long as there's an open seat.
Take a look at a wireline.
I've always been a believer that until you can put your hands on something and manipulate it, you're never really going to truly understand it.
For me, to hear that we're building an airplane is kind of like a surreal experience. Like I get to be up personal and in close with this.
You learn something new with it every time you come and join the group and...
Put a terminal end on this.
And so, they're getting inspired with aviation or maybe this will inspire them to go into something else in science or engineering. So, it's just those connections.
Snowballs, the students like to say, make the rings of Saturn.
Today, you are at the Charles Horwitz Planetarium owned by the school district of Waukesha. Well, we serve the curriculum for not only lower elementary students, but upper elementary and middle school and high school. So, it's truly a K-12 program and we've been in operation for 40 years. So, we've gotten a lot of appreciation from the teachers and the students.
And something that I really love to see is the kid who comes to my door and says, "I don't understand what you're saying." But at the end of the school year, he's like speaking in Spanish.
So, as a class, we collected items that will be donated to both areas affected by natural disasters, Mexico and Puerto Rico.
Because they need stuff that they don't have because they lost all their stuff that they had.
As a class, we've been talking about feelings and how to identify our feelings and how to relate our feelings and express ourselves with our friends and how to show empathy
Terry, do you mind just commenting on the process, putting it together?
Sure.
Come up to the podium, please.
It started last spring with Life Touch, that, that was the photo studio that did all of your portraits. And we filmed last spring and finished in the fall to catch the football season. And we kind of randomly selected schools and different activities to get, to capture the moment of our district.
Yeah, yeah, there's some good moments there. One, one was of the planetarium with Dave DeRimer. Actually, I forgot to mention during our last vote, we accepted his resignation after all these years. He's been like in the district 40 years. I don't remember the exact number, but boy, he's been really dedicated to, to the planetarium all this time. And there were a number of resignations, retirements coming up. I mean, that, those people will be missed. Any other questions or comments from my fellow board members?
No, I'll just say that, you know, we, we didn't have a person like Terry for a long, long time and it's, it's really been special that she has such an open mind in terms of how to promote the district and advance.
Fun.
Yeah. And I, and I do have to say, Representative Allen said it best, we do have a superintendent that has the right approach to how we try to fashion this district to meet the wide range of interests of children to do what they want to do, when they want to do it. And, and that's what this particular piece really highlights and does it very well. And I'd have to say, we had to finish with those crazy north kids at the end, chanting "We Are Waukesha," which is great.
That was great, yeah. Yeah, well, Terry, you've been with us almost two years?
Correct.
Yeah, and you're our marketing director, right? We take that for granted, but the audience might not know you as well as we do. I, I think the last time we had a marketing director was 1993 or '94. It was a long time ago, so we went quite a long time without one. And so, you're having an impact, Terry, and we thank you for that.
Remarkable school district and we're just going to keep going. And this will be available on the district TV, on our website, and social media, and available for parent meetings and...
Hopefully, it will persuade those who are considering moving to Waukesha to come to our great, our great city and, because one of the more attractive things about it is, as we believe, is the educational system. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to our committee reports. We rotate these reports every month and first up is the Human Resource and, Resources and Compensation Committee given by Patricia Madden.
Thank you, Mr. President. The administration is recommending Tahara Delion for the position of Whittier Elementary School principal. As the current academic dean at Blair Elementary School, Mrs. Delion knows the district's system and values as well as instructional expectations. She has strong student behavior experience and has a philosophy that matches with Whittier in terms of supporting students to find their why. She is a Waukesha community member who is a product herself of the Waukesha schools. She is a reflective leader, has a gentleness about her, and has experience with achievement, growth, and what it takes to get there. She is highly mission and vision focused and has a sense of urgency around increasing student achievement at Whittier while being realistic of the challenges this brings. She's single-handedly formed the PTO at Blair when she arrived and now it is in a place where the parents are owning the involvement of this. She is highly relational and is a positive leader who is driven by a deep moral imperative to serve the underserved. A confidential recommendation and resume were included in your packet. Salary and benefits will be according to middle management policies. I move to approve the appointment of Tahara Delion to the position of Whittier Elementary School principal.
Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Baumgart. Discussion? Mr. Baumgart?
I've known her on and off for a number of years at Blair and watched her and everything that you described is in terms of the adjectives in there was, is very accurate. She's really done a lot and her contributions to bringing Blair to the point they're at now should be recognized and she has a lot to do with the successes over there. And I was thrilled when I saw that coming through, that she's going to get the shot and I had a chance to cheat a little bit and talk to her in the meantime. She knows she's got a big job. She knows it.
Other discussion? All right, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes seven zero, Sue.
President, that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our policy committee given by Mr. Baumgart.
Okay, sit back and relax again. We got a whole bunch of them. Actually, we have seven that are here for the second reading and approval tonight. And we have about eight or nine that I will be giving a first reading on. So, firstly, action items. I'm going to go through these quite quickly. I've all had them for a month and had an opportunity to review them. There is one in here that has a minor adjustment to it, I'm going to share with you. But quite quickly, policy 5130, withdrawal dropout deals with information and data, or excuse me, information we received from DPI in the state as to how we need to handle this, when we have dropouts and the records for the dropouts. Nothing has changed in this from the last meeting. Policy 5540, schools and governmental agencies. The only changes in here were in words and that was changing from police to law enforcement officers. This one had a minor change and we did it over at, at the last policy meeting. Barb found that there are a couple more places in there that use the word police and we just changed those to law enforcement officers. Policy 5771, search and seizure. Also deals with, with language change, using school resource officers as, as the words in place of police liaison officers. And that's just throughout that policy that the changes were made. Revision of policy 5830, student fundraising. Revised to provide district with some options regarding the permissive use of logos and such in the literature that might be around fundraising and this falls under the superintendent's jurisdiction. Policy 6605, crowdfunding. This is a new policy which was introduced because more and more there are people looking for opportunities to do fundraising and social media is now one of the hot ways of doing Policy 6152, student fees, fines, and charges. Deals quite simply with stating who may or may not be, can be called in to do collection. Authorities, we are not using our volunteers to do collection work, that's left for professionals. And lastly, a policy which we've really been using for some time, 6800, the system of accounting, which means we have the options of looking for some other financial institutions for the work that we are doing and we've been operating under these words for some time. If anybody wants one of these to set aside and vote separately on it, we can do that. Otherwise, I'm going to move for approval of these seven policies.
Second.
Is there a second to that? Seconded by Mr. O'Brien. Would anyone like to pull one of those out?
Apparently not.
Any... Any further discussion? Okay, Sue, please take the roll call vote.
Amanda Roddy.
Aye.
Patricia Madden.
Aye.
Kurt O'Brien.
Aye.
Karen Reinacek.
Aye.
Greg Dietz.
Aye.
William Baumgart.
Aye.
Joseph Como.
Aye. Passes seven zero. Bill?
Okay, now we have a first reading on a number of policies, if I can find my way to them. Again, this is following the plans we've been following for some time now, where we get information from NEOLA about policies need to be brought up to date, possibly wording needs to be changed, probably, possibly compliance into some rules or regulations. So we do have to read these in a little bit more detail. You have copies of them. I'll steer you through some of the relevant parts. Under Policy 3120.01, Job Descriptions, under, this is a revision, which simply says that only licensed, excuse me, licensed personnel must be approved by the Board of Education. Other job descriptions are up to the administration to do those here. I think that was the only changes in here. Licensed personnel and revisions thereof shall be approved by the Board and maintained by the Human Resources Office. Oh, and at the bottom, there was a deletion where it took the superintendent out. That's just a statement we don't need. So that's Policy 3120.01.
Any discussion on that item?
We don't, we can't vote. You know, thank you.
No, it is a discussion item, though.
We don't vote on it.
Yep.
That's right. Thank you. Any comments or questions on that? Pretty straightforward wording that was given to us. Policy 3122.01 and Partner Policy 4122.01, Drug-Free Workplace for Professional Staff and Drug-Free Workplace for Support Staff. This has been updated, and I will go to that paragraph. Well, actually, two parts. First of all, they added alcohol and other drug abuse and deleted the term strictly illegal drugs, because alcohol can be considered a problem as well. And then there was a paragraph added, which is really used to describe for staff members how they may have to take prescription drugs in the workplace and how they should go about doing that, so that it's well protected. I'll read it, I guess. Maybe we should read that out loud. Professional staff members who use or possess a prescription drug that has been lawfully prescribed to the staff member and taken in accordance with the prescribed dosage shall not be deemed to be in violation of this policy. Whenever possible, a staff member should take the prescribed medications at home and not bring them to school. Where that cannot be accomplished, staff member in possession of prescribed drugs. While the school is responsible for taking appropriate precautions to assure that the drug remains, that the drugs remain in the staff member's possession at all times and are taken only in private out of the view of the students. Nothing in this policy shall prohibit the superintendent from evaluating a staff member's fitness for duty pursuant to Policy 3161, on requested leave of absence and fitness of duty. That is the same wording in both of these paragraphs. Kurt?
Since it's a policy on drug-free workplace, I think that there should be consideration for something in the policy for the responsibility of the staff member to disclose the medication if it may impair their effectiveness in their job days.
Joe, you getting that? Okay, thank you, Kurt.
Other thoughts, discussion?
Anything else? And again, with all of these first readings, remember, we have a meeting, I'm telling you, we have a meeting next Tuesday, a policy committee meeting. You may get questions to us before then as well, or come to the meeting. Policy 5310.01, Emergency Nursing Services. This policy has been updated. Again, some wording changes. Student activities is, for some reason, changed from activities of students. It's a matter of how we are going to see to it, then, when our students are active in one of their activities, excuse me, there will be somebody available to provide those services that might be needed in the case of an accident or an illness. And that's all just, that's the wording in here. Okay? Policy 5330, Administration of Medication and Emergency Care. This policy has been revised to include the administration of epinephrine and Narcan nasal spray. And I'm going to just ask a reminder for me. Joe, I think the epinephrine was here before, and we, as a district, have chosen to add the Narcan into it.
Yes, epinephrine has been in policy before, and we're proposing the administration of Narcan.
Okay. And I'm not going to read this whole page, because it's an entire page in here. I would ask you to look it over. I, I'm gonna answer right now, or if Joe can help, if I need to. A couple of questions have arisen about the Narcan relative to the safety of Narcan and things like that. And it's amazingly safe. It's, it's delivered through a nasal sprayer. If it were to be administered to the wrong person that doesn't really have an opioid evident, event, nothing happens. I mean, nothing negative happens. He just goes on. It doesn't hurt, it doesn't have any negative byproducts or after effects. Is that correct?
Correct. We sat down with our district medical advisor, our nursing team, looked at policy language, and that's where we came up with this. So yes, Narcan is very safe for those who have no opioids in their system. It's life-saving for those who have accidentally or intentionally overdosed on an opioid.
And there will be training provided through the county for our staff to participate in this.
Correct.
It's very simple. But, Joe?
And just wanted to point out that the Narcan's gonna be installed with the defibrillators. And if someone was to open up the defibrillator container, an alarm goes off.
Right.
And so that the appropriate administrator can go and, you know, see what's happening. So I just wanted to point that out.
It's another, yeah.
And we have not approved the use of Narcan in our district, so approval of this policy would first introduce it to, to our district, just so you know.
Okay. That was 5330. 5421, there's some changing in grading. At the bottom of the first page, sentences taken out, AP courses will only receive the weighted grade point if the student participates in the AP exam given by the college board. We have taken that out. Joe, I'm gonna ask you to elaborate on that, because it was kinda curious.
Yeah, a few years ago, policy language was added that required, if a student were to get the weighted credit, say, for AP Calculus, they would have had to have taken the AP test in order to do that. When that was put into practice, there was some monitoring as to who was taking the test, how much effort was being given for the test. I know that through the student fees conversation, we've talked about the cost of the test. And what we've learned is, the students who are taking the AP test, some of them are taking it and they're scoring very high on it, others are taking it for the sake of getting the weight. So knowing that now, we want to remove that burden from the family. If the student wants the test, wants to pass the test, wants to, you know, do well on the test, move on, use it for college credit, that is their choice. Other students want exposure to the rigorous curriculum. They don't necessarily want to participate in the test. They may get an A in our AP Calc class. We want to award those students for what they achieve in our classes. So that's the reason why we're taking the test, participation in the test off. If you do, you will note on there, though, that we're continuing on with the language, where if you want to take a course through youth or course options at the college level, that you must take the test with a score of three or higher, pass the test with a score of three or higher, and then pass that same, that next course in that sequence. So AP Calc in Waukesha, Calc III at a university, then, in order to get the weighted credit for the college course, you must have gotten a three or higher on the AP test in the district. So we're maintaining that language from our other conversations around course and youth options.
Yeah, I'm glad that we take a policy and we implement it, and then we take a look back at it. And I think this is a very constructive effort by administration to put in a policy I wasn't, I wasn't too comfortable with when, in fact, I think I still voted against it back then. But I would caution, and I think that this is perfect. The language in here is great. As I did at the time when I was uncomfortable with the language that was added. We should always be cognizant of the fact that it's difficult for a child or a family to come and ask for assistance. And so offering assistance so that they could take what was there wasn't really the answer. And I think the change that we're making right now is good. We're still offering assistance, but we're not penalizing them so much for not getting the assistance. And that's a constructive way of going about things.
Okay. That was 5421, a revision. Next one is a revision to Policy 5460, Graduation Requirements. And what we did quite simply here is add boys' and girls' lacrosse to the list of sports that can be used to waiver their FIAD program. And it's just a matter that, that those, well, that sport for the, both genders is very popular and...
Taken off.
Not. Take just as much exercise there as you would in a FIAD class. You have a question mark?
Yeah, I do. I see now we have snowboarding. When is that gonna be added as a waiver?
Now, the safety, safety program wouldn't be real popular with that. Did you watch that last night?
There is, there is some minimum requirement, though, isn't there, Dr. Coke?
Correct. As, as this was being proposed and requested with Boys and Girls Lacrosse, the athletic directors and the FIAD department have sat down and gone through and created a list of criteria that would qualify a sport or activity for this. And just generally, you know, that it is a sanctioned event, that it is, it is officiated by an actual paid official, that it is something that is in place year after year after year that competes towards a varsity level. So all of that has been built in as part of the check and balance. So, you know, snowboarding, snowboarding is well-established, and that may or may not be considered in the future. But what was the concern out of the athletic directors and out of the FIAD department was making sure that these are sports that meet the definition of a sport, that give kids the same rigor that they would experience in a FIAD class. And they felt that lacrosse fit that bill, and it's something that's well-established.
Hopscotch Club doesn't?
Again, all of those things would be taken through that criteria.
Mr. O'Brien?
I hope that Mr. Koch and Mr. Como will get angry letters from all the snowboarders out there about it being a sport and being compared to hopscotch.
Okay.
They may be bubbling up on the list.
Any more comments on that one? If not, we will move to revision to Policy 8320.01, Unauthorized Acquisition of Staff Personal Information. And there are several sentences added to this policy. Well, we had actually options in this policy. And are we doing both the electronic and the paper format? That's what it looks like here, yeah. So that was our selection there. And then it talks about where the date, or excuse me, where the data would be stored. No such notification is required if either the acquisition of data does not create a material risk of identity theft or fraud to the individual affected, I guess would be what that is. And personal information as acquired in good faith by the district employee or agent and was used only for lawful purposes. And that's the last revision we have. So those, actually, with the duplicate, we have eight policies there. Those are first reading. We will be discussing those on February 20th at our policy committee meeting and bringing them forward for the March meeting. The only change we're gonna be looking at is the one that you've already suggested, unless you, somebody sent more.
Mr. O'Brien?
We passed Withdrawal Dropout from the school earlier tonight as part of that list of things. In our policy, relative to certain categories of students, which would be like withdrawals, withdrawals and dropouts, or expelled kids, given, you know, the news of the day, I'd like to have us examine how much notification we're allowed to provide public safety officials relative to student discipline. What's allowed, what's permitted?
That was our very first policy that we actually did go through.
Right.
Okay, well, we're bringing that up.
Tonight's example, apparently, is expelled child, you know, and I've seen a few, you know, where you get a little worried about what you're doing, okay?
Yes. And with that, that concludes the policy committee report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bungart. At this time, we would have our Technology Committee report, but there was no meeting held. But I do believe there is a Technology Committee meeting scheduled for next month, so, next week.
Have you responded, Amanda?
Yes, the next Technology Committee will be Tuesday, February 20th at 4:30.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we, we were, I was waiting for your response. That's immediately before the policy committee meeting.
Oh, okay.
On purpose, because then Amanda and I only have to be here once, not twice.
Thank you.
Efficiency, that's a good thing.
Yeah, Amanda's bringing dinner.
I think I'm gonna show up early.
So no Technology Meeting tonight, okay.
Thank you. Moving on to Finance and Facilities, given by Mr. O'Brien.
Well, we have no action items to report tonight. We do have information items. There was five of them. We had the presentation of the 2016-17 audit by Schenk, our auditors. Each year, the school districts are required to have a financial audit conducted upon completion of their fiscal year ending June 30th. Mr. Amber Druwiski, Druisk, Druwiski, Senior Accountant, and David Markow, shareholder from Schenk SC, presented 2016-17 financial statements. There were no compliance items reported. It's always good news. The cost of the 2016-17 audit was $34,500, which included $28,700 for the main financial audit, plus $2,600 for the account, activity account audit, and $3,200 regarding the capital assets. The second information item was the management's response to the 2016-17 audit. Ms. Amber Druwiski reviewed the management communications. There were no internal deficiencies to report to the board, nor were there any compliance issues to report. There are comments on three processes that the board should look to improve: journal entry approval, student activity account records, and transportation aid internal controls. We asked for the traditional Dan Warren grade from our auditor, and they gave us an A- minus, and they said they wouldn't give anyone an A. So I guess we got their top grade. The third item would be the capital project funds review. The administration updated the committee on the several funds that are utilized in our county structure. In the Fund 40 to 49 range, which include Facility Maintenance Fund, Energy Exemption Fund, Capital Expansion Fund, Philomena Dreams, Property Sales Fund, and Capital Improvement Fund. And we had a staff member there, Amy... Amy Holly was there that night to help us with all that. We apparently have a very diligent effort to make sure these funds are complied with. So that's great. Fourth information item is the district summary financial report. In preparing for the first community focus group meeting, the administration gathered data from several sources in an attempt to provide participants some general financial information for the school district of Waukesha and other school districts in the state. The information from the taxpayer alliance school fax documents showed the school district of Waukesha to be operating well below state average cost per pupil and level of taxation. Those numbers are one year old, by the way, so we're probably as well or better today. Fifth item, monthly budget report. This is always the most exciting portion of my report. As of January 2018, the committee was presented the budget report for the month of January. $41,307,756 was reported in the general fund revenue, and $10,188,530 was expended during the month. There was no revenue reported in the Special Education Fund, and $2,903,863 was expended. The district is operating in accordance with our budget projection in all other areas. There weren't any discussion items. Mr. President, that includes my, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. O'Brien. Appreciate that. Moving on to teaching and learning. As you know, Barb Brzink is... As you know, Barb Brzezinka is excused tonight, but Karen Reinacek will be giving that report.
Good evening. The last teaching and learning committee meeting was held on February 6, 2018 at 6:00 PM. There are no action items, two information items, and one discussion item that appear on the agenda for teaching and learning this evening. Number one, DreamBox and Ten Marks update. In 2015, a three-year subscription was purchased for two digital math programs, DreamBox for grades kindergarten to three and Ten Marks for grades three to eight. With the subscription ending at the conclusion of the 2017-2018 school year, a digital resource review has been underway to determine what are the current best options for students. As part of the process, we are analyzing the costs of the resources and working through length of subscription comparatives, one-year, two-year, et cetera, as well as individual and site license comparatives. Input has occurred at all levels from parents to teachers. This will be brought as an action item for the March meeting. Number two, alternative education program update. On December 6, 2017, the administration and one school counselor from each home high school met to discuss the current status of freshman and sophomore failures. As a result, the district is planning to address the ninth and 10th grade student needs at the home high school. We are in the planning and discussion process of reallocating three full-time employees to the home high schools to address an at-risk credit recovery lab so that our support for students can begin as soon as the failure is experienced freshman year. Concurrently, with the support of the curriculum coordinators and the teaching and learning department, the process of rewriting the competency curriculum is underway. The purpose of this rewrite is to align the competency programs offered at South, East, and E-Achieve, as well as to revisit the program requirements for students to ensure that students are actively engaging their academic opportunities as they prepare to enter the competency program. Discussion items? We have student achievement update at Horning Middle School. Horning Middle School offers a variety of programming. This includes a comprehensive middle school, flight academy, and dual language. Information was shared regarding the high leverage practices implemented, successes, areas of need, and next steps to sustain growth and achievement. Thank you, Mr. President. That concludes the teaching and learning committee report. Our next meeting will be held on Tuesday, March 6, 2018.
Thank you, Karen. The last item was a discussion. I don't know if anybody had any comments that they'd like to make. Okay, thanks, Karen. Appreciate it. And that, that is the last of our committee reports, I believe. Moving on to other business, are there any recommendations for items to be applied to future Board of Education meetings or committee meetings? Yes, Kurt?
I would like the school district to look into probably one of the most vaccine problems this country faces now, which is opioids, opioid use, and how we can be at the front line of that as a district, not only with our kids but our staff, and making sure that we educate people and do what we can to prevent the spread of opioids. You know, when a, when a child buys an opioid, they don't know what they're buying sometimes, and they may not know because it can come in from unauthorized sources and be laced with fentanyl. And when you take it, you're dead. And I don't know if we're educating our kids well enough about this or our community well enough about these things, and if we're taking enough efforts to stop it. So I'd like it to become an action of the board through committee study or something that we try to get on the front lines here.
Okay. Any other suggestions for future consideration? Yes, Amanda?
Yes, sir, thank you. With all the talks of our middle schools and what the future of them looks like, I was wondering if we could get an update or a report on the, the programming at our middle schools? Recently, we have voted to, not to span, but break apart the wheel and how the middle school students select their programming, and I was wondering if we could just get an update on that and how things are going over the last year going into the new year, how those things are looking.
Okay, that would probably be a TNL committee.
Yep.
Where I'm not sure where we're going to do the Kurt's recommendation yet, but we'll have to think through that. It's, it's, might even be several committees, Kurt. Don't know yet, and that might be a workshop, too. Any other thoughts or ideas?
Good ideas.
Okay, thank you for those. We do not have a need for an executive session tonight, so thank you, everybody, for attending tonight, and happy Valentine's Day. You're adjourned.